Okay, good afternoon, everybody. It is 1:04 PM, September 20th, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today, we have about eight items on our posted agenda. And I have a couple of requests just for, sorry, item arrangement, just to bump number two with the LDG development presentation to number one. Another item, I just wanted to point out, I think that we had a couple misspellings and I probably, it was probably my fault, the reference to the House Bill 1271 was published as 1272. Can't seem to get that out of my head. And item for the tourism panel miles media contract. I also wondered, Commissioners, if you want to bump the joint discussion with the city on ARP requests to the last thing on the agenda as a kind of longer discussion item, but I think my biggest one is bumping number two to first in line. And if you either you have any other corrections.
Commissioner March, this is Commissioner Marcela. I would request that we move the agenda item with Nodel Parks easement, if we can bump that to tomorrow at 1:00 PM.
Okay.
Please.
Okay.
That's all fine with me.
All right. All right, very good. I will, let me just rearrange this a little bit so I can copy and then paste in the chat. And we should be good to go. All right. Thanks for your patience on that. Okay, so with those suggestions, I have first the LDG development presentation, second, the agreement with SCAD for professional services, third, the presentation from SCAD on the DOL grant, and then our consideration of the resolution regarding the grant application, fourth, tourism panel miles media contract, fifth, the resolution for parks replacement fund, six, the transit feasibility study contract, and seventh, the joint discussion with the city on ARP requests.
That sounds good to me.
Great. I will entertain a motion for approval of those adjustments.
Same.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, all those in favor? I.
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 Okay, we'll move into our community informational items then. Commissioner Marcel, do you have anything for us today?
Well, no, we had a really great turnout this weekend at the airport, fly in, breakfast, pancake breakfast, and want to extend a huge thank you to Josh and Josh at the airport and Michael Irwin and Mabel Bogart for so generously giving up their time to help with that breakfast. They are truly rock stars and we wouldn't be able to do it without their dedication. So thank you, thank you guys so much for your help. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, that was fun. Commissioner Beeler?
Let me just let people know, I think there was an editorial in the House Democrat about this, but the Colorado state redistricting is sort of underway and there's still a chance for people to weigh in on that. So encourage people to do that. It makes a difference both for federal US delegation as well as our state House and Senate reps and for did want to make a plug, I think some of the preliminary or working draft maps, particularly the federal congressional delegation and the state house map split us apart from parts of Summit and Eagle and Chaffey, depending on which iterations you look at. And I think it's in our interest as a community, just given the workforce and transportation and sort of housing in a relationship, so it's in our interest as Lake County to be in the same state house district and US congressional district as our neighboring counties of Summit, Eagle, and Chaffey. So plug in for that.
Thanks. I'll just mention September 30th, NRD Natural Research Disaster trustees have a meeting to review a couple of the proposals that we got on continuing work, one from the county and partners continuing work. That's gone on on river restoration and mine mitigation as well as forests and fuel mitigation and some culvert replacement planning. So that's looking forward to continued development of how the trustees want to continue to spend some of the SARCO settlement dollars here in the county. All right, if there's nothing else on community informational items, ask for any commissioner clarifications. I have none.
None for me either. Thank you.
None for me.
All right. And now for public comments on items not on the agenda, we asked that you keep that to three minutes. And if you are able to raise your hand, go for it. Otherwise, turn on your video and and get our attention. But I see Jamie Seifer, you raised your hand. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you, Commissioner March. My name is Jamie Seifer. I live at 1300 Harrison Ave. I'm here today to address exactly what I addressed at this meeting two weeks ago, which is that the election information on our county's website is sorely out of date. The election is only getting closer. I just got my blue book in the mail a couple of days ago. I know there were some changes made to the website. You know, system wide, and I would hope that those changes would make it even easier to update our public information as it regards elections. I think we, the citizens, deserve to have accurate and up-to-date public information. There's not just stuff from last year, there's a sample ballot from 2016. And I would just respectfully ask that we update that as soon as possible with the election coming up in much less than two months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Excuse me. Um, any other public comment? Colleen Nielsen, do you, are you here to give us a an update? Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. So I'm Colleen Nielsen. I'm the Director of Public Health here for Lake County. And as we know, we continue to have COVID in our community. We continue to message about the need for vaccinations for folks is our pathway to normal, so to speak. We continue to communicate and dispel myths that are out there. We also are encouraging testing if you have been exposed to someone COVID and or you are sick and you don't know what it is. And we are working closely with all of our partners, St. Vincent Health specifically, you know, to be able to provide those vaccinations. And St. Vincent Health does have the ability to test at both the hospital as well as at the St. Vincent Family Health Center. I think the other piece is that we are looking at right now, our vaccination status is about 61%. And like I said, we're just trying to encourage folks to get out there. And and even if you received your first dose, let's get your, get you in here for your second dose. If you have some questions and hesitations around that, please reach out to our nursing staff at nurses@co.lake.co.us and they'll be able to answer your questions and hopefully set you up for a second dose. So that would be really great. The new latest and greatest is a lot of conversation around what is being called boosters at this point in time. Right now, we are clear to do a third dose for those folks that are immunocompromised. And so if you feel that you are fall into that category, we have the ability to do a third dose for those folks. The Federal Drug Administration met on Friday to talk about what that a third dose, what that might look like kind of across the board for those folks who already are fully vaccinated. They currently are only discussing Pfizer, not Moderna. Recommendation came out that they would encourage a third dose with Pfizer for those who are 65 and up. They might also include healthcare and teachers in that category. We don't know what that looks like or what that direction might take. But I think we just have to be mindful that we're only talking about Pfizer. So for example, if you got Moderna, you might fall into that category. You don't have the ability to now have a Pfizer dose. I think that's important to note. And the other piece is the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices is meeting this week to kind of formalize what those recommendations might look like and what that rollout might look like. As you can imagine, a majority of our doses that we gave here in our county were Moderna. And so we recognize that a lot of folks did receive Pfizer outside of our county and we do have the ability to give both as we continue to see what happens this week as far as those recommendations from what's the Advisory Council on Immunization Practices of what our rollout might look like. So stay posted. We did push that out on Friday to see that we are monitoring the situation, met with St. Vincent earlier today to kind of talk about, you know, what we can or can't do. So thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions for you, Colleen. Thank you.
Colleen, I, excuse me, sorry, I'm wondering if you could share with us kind of a a little bit of case count that we're currently experiencing and see if are we experiencing a spike in cases? And what estimated percentage is of Delta variant in the cases that we're seeing right now? If you have any of that, sorry, I know that's kind of on the fly and that's a big question. So if you.
No, that's okay. I am obviously, I have my screen up, so I can pull up the latest. And so as far as I'll answer your Delta, Delta question, so right now in the state, almost 100% of cases that are being sequenced, meaning that they're grabbing them from labs all across the state are all Delta. So truly Delta is the strain that we are seeing, you know, here in Colorado. You know, they have pulled some of our cases from Lake and we did have Delta here as well. So I don't think that's a big surprise in this field at all. And as far as looking at our latest, and so this data is current as of 9/18, so two days ago. So as far as positivity rate, this is a one-week average, we're at 9.38%. And if you guys remember the dial system, that would put us in orange. But as you know, we have no restrictions in place at this point in time. And then as far as incident rate, which is a little bit more forgiving, you know, we've had four total new cases in the past week. What we continue to see though is in our cases is that it kind of hits a population of unvaccinated folks that are living together, other family members and or friends. And that's why sometimes we get that quick spike of five to six cases in one day because it hit a family unit and or a friend unit that's unvaccinated. Did I catch it all?
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you so much. I don't think I have any other questions.
All right. Thanks for being here, Colleen. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, any other public comment on items not on the agenda? And I'm going to try to recopy the agenda that I put in the chat for those who are joining again. I don't see any new hands up. All right, seeing no other comments from the public on items not on the agenda, we'll move into new business. First, on our items of new business, we have an LDG development presentation. And I see Chase Kane here. Not sure. Hi, Chase. I know Chase came to speak with the Building and Land use staff and kind of give an intro to what it is you do. Do you want to jump in and introduce yourself for us?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner March. My name's Chase Kane. As, as said, I'm with LDG Development. And today, I'm here to talk to you all about leveraging public and private partnerships to build new construction, affordable housing in the community, and also maintain that affordability in the long term. As you all know, it's no secret that Lake County is no longer a secret to the once resort-dominated areas in the central mountains of Colorado. A lot of the growth around the county, such as Summit County, Eagle County, and even those naturally occurring workforce communities like Silverthorne and Dillon are seeing an intense rise in their housing costs and just barriers to retaining and attracting workforce. And that is making its way quickly down the highway to Leadville. And we're very aware of that. And we want to talk about how public and private partnerships, how we typically see the benefits of these throughout the community to provide affordable housing for for the workforce and really just stimulate the local economy. I do have about eight slides, seven slides actually, that I'll go through with you all quickly, just to give you a little reference. But before I do that, I heard this quote recently, and I wanted to share it with you all because I think it's a very, very applicable to what we are doing, me as an affordable housing advocate and you all thinking about the future of your community. And that is people change because they are inspired to change. But we can only inspire them by being the example and and sending the invitation. So first, I want to thank you all for inviting me here to discuss this and know that it really will go a long way with your community, whether it be, you know, anything we can work out with LDG or long-term partnerships throughout your community. So with that being said, I will share my screen and go over some slides really quick. Sorry about this. I have to authorize the recording of my screen.
We can see that.
Can you see my screen now?
We, yeah, we can.
Okay. See, do you see page one? Sorry, I can't.
We do. We see new construction housing. We see the title page there.
Okay, okay, wonderful, wonderful. Again, LDG Development, my name is Chase Kane, and I'm the Development Manager for the State of Colorado for LDG. Quick synopsis of who LDG is, how long we've been in the affordable housing and tax credit development. We are 25 years experience and primarily that's in light tech developments, meaning tax credits and a lot of times tax exempt bonds. We have experience in 4% and 9% tax credits. In our portfolio, we have over 19,000 units. We have built all of those or sourced, built, and still manage all of our, all of our units. So we are a long-term community partner in any communities that we go into. We don't, we don't refinance after stabilization and flip it to a market rate developer. And we also don't try to refinance and sell our assets at year 15 when the tax credit, when the tax credit period ends, we, we convert that and we maintain the affordability for as long as we can because we understand that everyone deserves a quality place to live. Our principles are owned by two, two gentlemen and out of Louisville, Kentucky. But they started LDG with the, with the mantra that everyone deserves a quality place to live. And they stand behind that to this day and which is why we hold all of our units to date. Our portfolio is diverse. About 90% of our portfolio is affordable housing. So that provides rent restricted units to individuals who earn up to 60% of the average median income of the area. We have workforce units in our portfolio for up to 120% AMI. We are very well versed in Section 8 and project-based vouchers. We have a lot of those scattered throughout almost every development I've worked in. But a lot in the, just across our portfolio as well, senior housing and market rate. We do use, we did use some tax credits on our senior housing. And those are rent restricted units and they are also age restricted units. And we also have some market rate units scattered across our portfolio as well because we understand the need or the benefits of having a mixed income community all the way from Section 8 to market rate. And that's kind of the shift that a lot of the housing studies are coming up with now. And we see that, that benefit in a tangible way. And it's really cool. So again, like the reason why I'm here is to talk about public and private partnerships. And I, no, I don't want to go into the pain or the the housing crisis that you all know is happening right now. You see it with your eyes. You're, you're members of the community. You see it when you go out to eat. And or, you know, when you try to go out to eat and the restaurant you normally go to isn't fully staffed and you have to wait a long time. So things that cause that on an economic level, we believe that a lot of it starts with housing. And so the low inventory of housing in Lake County is, is pretty prevalent. There seems to be in the past, you know, I know that the rail yards are coming online, but the lack of affordable housing and units built specifically to be deed restricted are not, are not prevalent in the area. And a lot of the, we call it naturally occurring affordable housing, not to be confused with a blighted or community at all, it's just houses that were built years ago that would be available for workers, either coming into the market or being able to save up enough to, to rent those. So and a lot of those units seem to be getting taken up by folks with wanting a second home or short-term rentals, as I'm sure you guys are, you all are familiar with. I read where 74% of Lake County workers commute to other counties. Not only is that a burden on quality of life, it could potentially be a safety hazard in the winters going over some of the passes and, and whatnot wherever folks are working. I've heard up to an hour, you know, commute at the, or not to a minimum hour commute just to get to Eagle or to get to Summit County. And then, like I said, as you all know, the pressure from the outside counties funnel into Lake County and Leadville and increases the housing or the construction cost, which directly correlates with the housing cost. And the problem with that puts downward pressure on the local businesses because they can't raise their wages to accommodate these new, new rents, higher rents, higher mortgage, mortgage cost. And which leads to unfilled positions in retail and just the service injury in general, high turnover, high training costs, lost productivity, et cetera. The list, the list goes on. This is a complex problem. There's, there's no one that's really not affected here. But what ways that we can try to add it best we can, like I said, it's a complex problem that has a lot of complex solutions. But once you, once we can get a grasp on the increasing housing cost and rental cost, the local economy benefits from it greatly, just as a, just to keep a vibrant small business community that brings together the community and its participation, such as working and just, just everyday life, going to eat, going into, you know, the mom and pop shops that we all love to shop at. Like I said, participation from local workers and housing can really be a vehicle for building wealth and not just wealth for you, but generational wealth. We accumulate equity and really can provide a financially stable life for workers across the income spectrum from those who make less than 30% AMI up to those in the missing middle is what it's being called. And those, those are the folks up to 120% AMI because they no longer qualify for affordable housing, yet they've worked their way and graduated to the middle class. But they, they can't afford the, or they're not, they don't qualify for affordable housing. And then they can't afford the luxury market rate housings that are coming online. Connectability, enhanced walkability, it's one of our huge pushes in any development that we do. Infrastructure improvements such as utilities, roads and sidewalks are always part of our scope. We try to work with the community as much as possible as far as input and really what, what the community wants and needs. And a lot of times it is the utilities, roads, sidewalks, and just the walkability. And then there's an old adage in development world or real estate world, it's rooftops bring retail. And I understand that everybody wants to have their community the new latest and greatest place, but rooftops bring local coffee shops. It brings, a lot of times it'll bring financing for small businesses that weren't available previously in the area. As populations grow, they, you know, a lot of times states will want to funnel some money into those communities. Are there any, so I feel like I've talked a lot, but if there are any burning questions, please don't hesitate to ask. And, and I will be happy to clarify any of the, any of the lingo that I use that may not be used every day. So please ask me if, if, if needed.
He said, one quick question you made me think of with regarding senior housing development. Do you all, do you all ever acquire existing properties and manage?
No, not typically, because we are a new build developer. Transparently, we do, what we have done though are built units for, you know, maybe existing units that need to be rehabilitated or at least tore down or rebuilt. And then we will build the units and then place them in those units. So they're not displaced. That makes sense. But we don't typically take over existing developments or communities as a, just a general. This is a slide on different tools to, sorry, Commissioner March, did I answer your question or?
Thank you.
No problem. So here are some tools that we have used to, as a vehicle to provide affordable housing, quality housing quickly and as thoughtfully as possible. These are, I divvied them up into two different categories, which would be incentives. And that is something that, that the community and the city council and county commissioners would be able to help us with, which would be a density bonus, meaning an increased density as far as where it was zoned for, just to get that number of affordable house, or really reduce the deficit of affordable housing. I think I saw where it's almost 600 units right now in Leadville. There's a deficit of 600 units in Leadville. And so anyway, density bonus, a streamlined fast track entitlement process. That's huge as far as rezoning goes, because those can take up to a year. So if I, if we were talking about a site-specific project now, we would have to start the rezoning process. And a lot of times that can take from eight to nine months. And so that is eight to nine months of folks still commuting, still looking for housing, still getting cost burden. Different fee waivers, parking variances. I know there are avenues for infrastructure funds such as TIF districts and metro districts. So and then moving over to the more partnership side of this is land donation. We work a lot with housing authorities and, and just different jurisdictions who, who own land and we enter into a ground lease. We are very versed in doing that. Along with that is a property tax abatement that helps us, that helps our pencil our financing a little bit better in the front end so that we can, we can be quick to market with, with these. And then housing reserve for local employees and then housing reserve for major employers. They, you know, that is, that is in direct partnership with. They, you know, it, that is, that is in direct partnership with the county or the city on what exactly is needed there. But there are some different ways that we could deed restrict the units of, of any complex. There are some photos here. These are, these are our, these are our apartments. Quickly just run through the highlights and it's granite countertops. And we do have large units because we want families to live here and be able to feel like home. Our one bedroom started out at eight hundred and fifty square feet and our three bedrooms go up to thirteen fifty. So they are large spacious kitchens, stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, LVT flooring, like the luxury vinyl flooring, not the typical LVT. But so LDG, this is just an example of what we do in, in other communities. Provide quality housing for workers across the income spectrum, like I said, thirty percent to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. And we like the life, we like to, we're getting into the lifecycle housing. We haven't done a huge master plan community, but if so, if the opportunity arrives, we would definitely be happy to include affordable, senior housing, market rate, single family, just to have for community members to spend their career and lifecycle in the same community. We, we as a developer, take on a lot of the risk and a lot of the heavy lifting, I'll call it, to get developments like this across the finish line. So we spearhead the community efforts, we spearhead entitlement and rezoning efforts. We, we work with local engineering firms to produce all of our drawings. And then we of course have to secure the funding for construction and mortgage or construction loan and then our mortgage. And typically we do that through tax credits and bonds, other sources of soft funding, subordinate loans thing that are granted by the state and then there are certain avenues that we can tap into locally. We, we professionally, well, we, we use a third party management, local third party management company that we contract with for the long term. Like I said, we're a long term partner of any community that we're in. So and we still manage all of them and are the first point of contact if anything goes wrong. We provide a lot of supportive services to our residents. We are working to expand this list, but right now it is, we provide flu vacs vaccinations, financial planning seminars, computer courses, after school activities, tutoring, and we just, we're rolling out a new program in Kentucky where we are partnering with Norris Healthcare. And they are the largest healthcare company in Kentucky. And they are actually going to start providing supportive services to all of our units across our portfolio. And I think like they'll travel there with like a bus or a trailer. You know, once a quarter and they will be able to provide, you know, nurses there for checkups and things like that. And then the big one that I know a lot of, the financial folks out there like is we do assume all of the risk as far as being the guarantor. We do, we would, I mean, that's, we, 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 we pay for everything upfront. Construction plans, entitlement work, rezoning, all those fees come from us or all those fees are paid by us. And we see it, we see it through until, until the buildings start deteriorating, which aren't, aren't very soon because we do build quality, quality work. So. Next steps, there is a letter of support floating around that I sent over to Director Clarkson and, and Am. Please review that. Let me know if there's anything that needs to, that you'd like to see differently maybe. But this is a big step for us as far as taking it to whoever would start, whoever would do the rezoning and then more specifically the CHAF or the, the Lytech and bond allocators. They really like to see this to know that there is some type of vehicle in motion. And, and that really just kind of jumpstarts and catalyzes a project or at least involvement in seeking land and financing. Site analysis, which would be identify potential sites in Lake County and Leadville. And then we would start community engagement and doing environmental work. Rezoning and entitlements, and then we would try to apply for tax credits and bonds, which at this point, if we had a site ready to go or ready to go, had a site picked out in mind, then we would have to, we would apply in twenty twenty two, just as CHAF's tax credit and bond application cycle is. And that's a, I'm, I know that there was a lot of information, so I would love to answer questions. I hope I explained everything well enough, but if not, please don't, please don't hesitate to ask me to explain anything else that may have been overlooked or just casually talked through, but I will stop there and see if anybody has questions.
Thanks, Chase. Commissioner, is any questions for Chase?
I had a, I had a question. I was wondering if you could talk a little more about how that, it sounded like there were opportunities for rental units, but also full ownership, wondering if you could talk about more about how that gets mixed in. Is that all within one, one single development or yeah, just talk more about, about those different options that would come in with a project like this?
Sure. The way it would work is we would subdivide each, each apply for a single family home. And then you'd, well, we have already applied for tax credits for those developments, which would make the cost less, if that makes sense. So we, it would be fa, any, any project would be phased like this, but there would be a single family, which would be the home, more the homeownership side of it. We could do all, we could also do town homes for sale also that can be subdivided and sold. And then we, we typically only do rental multifamily. They, yeah, do, sorry, do you have any more specific question or just kind of how, how that would work?
I guess, I, I, that's a good play. I guess the other question is sort of, you gave that, I mean, the full range of different sort of percent AMIs. You know, from section eight up to market rate. And I was wondering, are, with that mix, do any of the for sale units, we'd like, where, where would you say they tend to land in that range of AMI?
Typically, we, we keep those pretty, we kind of keep them on the workforce and market rate scale, to be honest with you. So that would be sixty percent and above AMIs. So tailored towards families, families of four making right now in, in Lake County would be about sixty six, sixty seven thousand dollars. And as, as far as the, the price of the homes, that would, that would have to come a little bit later. But I would, I wouldn't imagine they being much more than like three fifty or four hundred thousand dollars. Which I, I know is a lot even for an affordable house, but it's, that's just kind of the temperature of the market right now.
Okay, thanks. That was, that was good for me.
Mr. Marcel, any questions?
Is Kayla still on? Yeah, sorry. Yeah, just plugging my computer in. I don't actually have a whole lot of questions at this time. I guess really my only question would be what size of parcel would you be looking for in order to engage for development?
Great question. We like to see around ten acres. We have built and on as little as seven acres and provided a hundred and seventy eight units on it. And that was all multifamily. So ten acres would be the minimum we would like to entertain, especially if we're trying to get single family on there. But that, that's, that's our ballpark.
Chase, do you all have agreements or some, some partnerships for materials and whatnot? Or to streamline that a little bit to give you all a good base for construction costs and whatnot?
Yeah, yeah, actually, great question. I kind of glossed over this, but we do have a whole general contracting arm and an, and an architect, architectural design arm as well under LDG. So we do the construction management work for all of our, like, if we worked in Leadville, we would pull in local contractors. However, we do have a material contact and we oversee the construction from estimating all the way till turnover. So we do have quite the book of contacts for materials and especially in the what Midwest and even sou- southern like in Texas region that would, that we'd pull from. And we've actually already hired a, a gentleman as our regional superintendent for Colorado that has built in Colorado and a lot, he's builds a lot of the, both multifamily mainly. And so we are, we are building out that arm for Colorado as we speak.
And do the number of units ideally, I suppose, that is determined and heard a lot by that?
Forty is our, our happy place.
What's that?
Hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty.
Forty is our, is our happy place. We, that seems to be, that seems to help our, all of our investors, including county, city and our, and whoever holds our mortgage. That it's, that's, it helps, it helps get those deed restricted units that to pencil better.
And how long, how long, what kind of phasing is this for construction over what period of time might you anticipate? I suppose that's really a hard answer to question.
Yeah. I'll just, I'll use the two, two hundred and forty unit complex on nine or, nine or ten acres. We, our construction timeline is twenty four months for that, not include. Now, I know that in Colorado, it will be a little bit different because of building seasons. But we can, a lot of times we won't phase our, our, our multifamily products. And we will just start building and we'll complete one building, start lease up after a year. And then we'll finish out the remaining, you know, five, six, seven buildings. So as we're building, folks are moving in as quickly as possible.
Chase, my next question would be around infrastructure. Would there be any kind of expectation for the county to participate on, on cost sharing with infrastructure? Installation or, or have collaboration from those groups or what does that look like?
And yes, in short, we do take on a lot of that, a lot of that burden such as the fees and, and just building it in general, happy, we're always happy to do what the community wants. And that's now, that's typically, that's typically the case where there's infrastructure available. This being a new region, I, we haven't done much kind of utility work and cost feasibility in the area. So it really would depend on what parcel, either you have in mind or we could find that would work. So yes, but yes, we would expect some help to, to be, to be honest. We would come to you and say, look, we do all the backend work, figure out how much it's going to cost, what we're going to have to do and say, this is what we can do. If you can help, great. And if you absolutely can't, let's get together. Let's, you know, meeting of the minds, let's go to the state, let's get, you know, Julie McCloskey on the phone, see what she can do to, to funnel some infrastructure. Because there's bonds available, there's dollar money, there's different avenues. But of course, a lot of that does add on to the overall development timeline, all those approvals.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And Chase, when you say rezoning application, I mean, I presume we're talking about a planning development application. I mean, that's, that's inherently that is rezoning. But I just, you know, maybe continuing with the, the, just specifying because, because we know that process. Yeah. And, and that would be, you know, this board and our planning commissioners, of course, but.
Yeah, and so I, to, I guess the question is, what, what do we have in mind? And you're exactly right. We would, you know, and, and we'd rezone to a PUD. We'd put together all that paperwork and submit it to you all. We would be happy to hold a community meeting to get more input on it. But ultimately, we would use our, we would hire the local contractor that, or I'm sorry, civil that we already have been working with and to develop a site plan to bring to, with you all and the community to, to, to get rezoned and hopefully that can be streamlined in some way, form or fashion.
And Chase, dealing with bigger Lytech, you know, or, or funding mechanisms that'll get woven in here. Do those conversations happen before? I mean, those conversations happen after, sorry, I think I'm remembering your, your process there. After the, yeah, applying for Lytech after rezoning and plans are kind of permitted.
Right. So yes, you're exactly right. CHAF, now I'm, I'm saying CHAF generally because they are the allocating agency. I, but as you all know, a lot, lot of times the county or town or housing authority can issue a lot of these as well. But as far as CHAF goes, they want to see a site that's zoned and has plans and it's shovel ready.
Yep. Great.
So what's our, what's our next step? Sorry, I don't, does anybody else have a question? My next question is just what our next steps are with you all.
If, take a look at the letter of support and that will go a long way for us as with CHAF. But we, we would already start having conversation with CHAF, letting them know that we met with you. I mean, not, not even site specific, say, hey, we know that Leadville is a hot area, especially for, for you all. What, you know, letting you know, we're starting this conversation. Next steps would be identifying a site. And if you all have a site in mind that you would like us to take a look at, I'd be happy to do that. And if not, I, there are, I've been, I've received a couple solicitations on some land around the area that would actually, that's actually in the county, not in Leadville, but it's close.
Okay.
So I can, we can walk, we can talk through that at the time, but there is nothing right now that is in effect. So it's just identifying a site.
Well, and Chase, the, we'll take a look at that letter of support. I'll also say that, you know, our ongoing conversations with surrounding counties hopefully will lead to, you know, partnerships in kind of solving that problem collectively. As you mentioned, Representative McCloskey, you know, she's, she's based out of Summit and, and there's certainly been conversations there of how to, how to, you know, think creatively and, and partner in big ways for resolution or a solution. Yeah.
Certainly.
With benefit, kind of our, our tri-county area, for sure. Well, thanks. I, I really appreciate your time today and, and I'm sure we'll, you know, hear more from you and, and stay in touch with Landy's staff and whatnot. But if we have any questions following today, we'll, we'll be sure to send your way or, or through staff. And we'll take a look at that letter. But thanks for taking the time and having an interest in the county. Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Thanks for, thank you for having me. I really enjoyed this. I hope I didn't talk too much or, or get too in the weeds, but I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner, is any parting thoughts before we move on?
No, I don't think so. Thank you so much for your time today. Totally appreciate it. And I'm, I'm really excited about what can be next for our community. what can be next for our community.
You're welcome. Likewise.
Great.
All right. Well, I will stop sharing my screen. And uh please let, please let me know if I can answer any questions, but uh I will let, let you all continue with your meeting. Have a great day.
Very good. You too. Thank you so much.
Bye.
All right. Okay. And we'll go into item two. And item two, first, we're going to go through our agreement um with the Southern Colorado Economic Development District. And Michael Yurman is on the line here. Um I have Michael's scope pulled up somewhere. There it is. Um but this is work uh that we've been chatting with Michael um about. And it integrates into our next uh agenda item in the DOLA housing um grant application. Um sorry, but first, uh so we have, we have a pending uh service agreement um that I think we can definitely make a uh decision on the scope today, pending just the finalization of that um with legal. And um over the next several months, as listed here, uh Michael would aim to be helping the county with the completion of the Lake County Housing Guidelines, assistance with formalizing structure of regional housing authority as needed. Uh the creation of development strategies for workforce housing, assistance with the DOLA House Bill 221271 application. Um the development of public process that meets the DOLA Planning Grant Guidelines to identi- identify public sites for housing, cost performers, entitlement process and concept designs that can be implemented over the next five years. And uh beginning discussions with county and city staff on how to implement land use code updates from the policy committee. Michael, do you have anything else to add?
Well, so I, let me touch on, you know, we prepared this scope of services uh probably a month ago before we started getting into the planning grant. And so there's a few nuances I want to point out uh to make sure that we don't somehow skip over county pro- pro- proclaim pro, I can't say the word, proclameth. Policies of procurement, thank you. I cannot see it. Uh policies because we're going after dual funding now. Uh and so, so go backing up, you know, this was prepared ahead of uh you know, knowing that we were going to go after formal funding from DOLAF. And so we now are in this, what I would say, hurry up and wait clause because it was a, it was kind of a fire drill to get our application, which Anne is going to present here in just a minute, uh with all the hard work of Anne and Chrissy over the weekend to get that across the finish line for today. Um but DOLA does have a rule that you cannot spend money before you receive a formal grant award. And we'll talk about how some of these things like the community guidelines fit well within the um mashing of the planning grant. There is one thing on here though, and I think, uh I think this was a, is a good segue to talking about what's not in the planning grant, but something that we should discuss with both the city and the county moving forward. And it's germane to the conversation you just had with the uh with LGD, right, or LGBD or LG, uh I screwed it up.
LDG.
LDG. Uh you, you know, there's um, and this also applies to the uh incentives grant. So um a couple of pieces of clarification. One is the, we'll start with the incentive grant. That's really the big um eye on the prize and that grant is due next fall. And that's up to a million dollars that would fund infrastructure. Uh Jeff, one point of clarification we did get from DOLA is that if they were to give a million dollar award for extension of utilities, that's just the utility work would have to be done, not the construction. Uh and that was like a huge woo! Uh and also made uh made the potential for Lake County and Leadville to be eligible for that incentive grant uh much higher. And made me a little bit less scared about uh trying to produce a project that quickly. Um secondarily, the piece about looking at um, looking at sites, that is considered pre-development and wouldn't be allowed under the planning grant um or the, it could be funded under the incentive grant. My issue with that is that, given the timeline and also the discussion you just heard from the previous developer, um I think there's a parallel path that we should be discussing about doing uh a, a, a small group um and ha- having it expand into a public process, but bringing on uh architects and engineers to, to really prioritize the top three pieces of real estate that is either public, that's publicly owned uh either by the city or the county. And then doing performers and concept plans. Uh when you start hearing unit counts of 240 from the previous presentation, you know, obviously those are major, major projects and would have large community impacts uh beyond just the actual site, but where they go into roads and so on and so forth. Uh and so I did have some high level conversations uh with some, getting some cost estimates on what it would take to bring in an architect and engineer in. Uh and the engineering is about 5,000 a site to really hammer in to know what you're looking at as final costs. Uh and then it's probably about the same per site uh to do concept plans. And again, these would not be elevations. These would be site plans and looking at how a site would come together and then how you'd bring infrastructure onto a site. But that would give um both the city and the county a really good idea of what you would do. And then the, you know, when you talk about using a public asset, you typically want to do a formal RFQ where an LDG would come in and give you a formal proposal. Uh and if you're able to put that in with the incentives grant and able to cover, you know, the, the, that grant does require a 20% match. But so for a million dollars, that'd be a $200,000 match from the city and county. I mean, you're able to make a lot of headway on doing a large project relatively click, quickly if we can get our ducks in order. Um and so anyways, that is in the here as part of the proposal. What my responsibility would be is to manage the process for the county and the city uh to put out an RFQ for the architect and engineering services and make sure that we complete that in the timeline, which is very short uh to make sure that we're ready to put to forward a full-blown incentive grant uh proposal. Uh beyond that, there's some things uh that we'll get into as far as the grant. And like I said, the community guidelines, as much as I would love to take on that contract, um I do want to make sure that we follow procurement guidelines if it hits those, those price points and putting forward proposals. Uh like I said, I, this was put in front of the, put together before we knew that the planning grant existed. Uh and so again, I would be happy to, uh you know, if I, you guys have worked with some great consultants, they're all my peers. If I were to lose a contract to one of them, I would be more than happy to continue to assist the county uh through those processes uh because they're so important to the final outcome. So I would say, you know, in general though, uh there's still a lot of work to do that's under this contract that doesn't fall in the, the DOLA grant. And we'll make sure that we walk that line with DOLA so that we don't do anything that jeopardizes me charging the county for something that could be reimbursed by DOLA or that requires procurement by uh processes under the county, under the county, if that makes sense.
I think so.
Rambled there.
No, that's okay. Um do you intend to revise this then or, or I think?
I certainly, I certainly can. Yep. Uh you know, I, you know, I think there's some things in here that we can just take out. Um but I think, again, overarching, I think you see that a majority of this is still um I, I would say because of the DOLA grant funding, wh- what we had originally discussed was first coming in and doing the guidelines. But because that is eligible under the DOLA grant, uh and we might need to go, the county might need to go out to RFQ. What I would actually suggest is that the first timely thing for me to do is to start working because it wouldn't be covered under DOLA. Is starting to put together a proposal for both the city and county to consider funding this design shred process. Chrissy, I know you have talked about the fact that the coalition could even be willing to be a matching uh player in that process, depending on how it's structured and ensuring public uh processes is there for your coalition members. And then also, I know I've uh talked with Marla about even Lake County Economic Development um corporation being potentially a funder too. So, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of work just right there um between now and when we hear back from DOLA. Uh and then from there, we can, we can talk about the next steps to make sure that we're following their contract if it's awarded.
Perfect. All right. Um well, that sounds great. And I think that those kind of revised details is outlined um due to the sensitivity of DOLA and, and the application that we're submitting. Um which, what is the turnaround that we might hear from them? Do we know?
Yeah, you know, I um, I would hope that it's fairly quickly. They said the first review is going to happen uh tomorrow. So they're looking, the first and middle deadline for this planning grant, and that's why was the kind of fire drill was today is the application for the first round. Uh and they plan to do a review every month. So
Okay.
Typically, planning grant contracts are fast turnaround. The infrastructure grants take a little bit more paperwork.
All right. Okay. Well, I think with, with that, with those things you outlined, um I mean, I have comfort.
And I'll send a revised scope uh just focusing on the, the very short term next steps. And then again, we'll, um I'm happy to do that.
Perfect. Thanks, Michael. Uh Commissioner Feedler or Marcella, any questions for Michael?
No, I don't have any questions. It sounds relatively straightforward, really.
Okay.
Uh yeah, same here.
All right. Uh if you don't have any other questions on that scope, um I'll entertain a motion.
Uh Commissioner, much before we, before we move, I think Christie Golarza has her hand up.
Chris, did you have something to add for?
Yeah, I just, yeah, just really quickly, if it's okay, I have a question. Um Greg Lobby, if you are around, I feel like the city was like urgently needing the community guidelines done. Do you feel like that, that this proposal will meet the city's needs to include deed restriction in phase two for the rail yards?
I think we're okay. We had a caveat in there that, that allowed us an out of the community guidelines. We're not ready yet. Um you know, we do actually have the deed to that piece of land now. So uh we're having a LURI meeting um next week. And at that time, I, I think we're probably going to go out to uh an, an RFP uh for development of that property. But what we should have, you know, uh what we need to get the RFP out there because it's going to be a while before housing is built.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry. I know that was a little bit of a slur, but since everybody was in the same room, I thought it was um important to get that question answered.
And there's, and Anne's going to get into the budget. There's 22,000 slated to assist with the funding for that in the, in the planning grant. So that's why I would recommend waiting a month to get DOLA assistance. Um it's a big chunk of what we're looking at.
Okay. Uh Commissioners, any other, if there's no other question, I'll entertain a motion on the scope and of services um contingent on, you know, the finalization of the professional service agreement fully signed and executed in conjunction with legal.
So moved.
I didn't, I didn't say approval or denial, though. A motion for approval of the scope of services with uh SCAD uh and Michael contingent on uh final, final signatures and agreements on uh sorry, in conversations with legal um on the professional services agreement.
So moved. Sorry, I did not hear you not say.
Okay. I don't typically do that. You gotta. Hey.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
No, none for me. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for uh being so thoughtful um with, with revising that scope. I do appreciate it.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely navigate that.
Discussion for me.
All right. Thank you. Uh seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Um all right, now on to number three. And I guess Anne and, and Michael and maybe Christie will tag team a little bit here on that presentation of what we've got included in our draft of the application for the House Bill 1271.
Thank you, Sarah. Um so yeah, first and foremost, um you know, I want to thank Michael um and uh Chrissy for her morning edits this morning. She looked through um everything, but um none of this, uh this quick turnaround and uh the increasing capacity has been tremendous to be able to bring this to you um to the board today. So um I just wanted to do a quick thank you. And just to recap, you know, I think the subject matter, almost everyone that's on this meeting is, is very familiar. But again, this is um in reference to Colorado House Bill 1271 um which established these programs offering a state assistance to local governments um to promote the development of innovative um housing strategies in a manner that's consistent with best by induced local practices. Um and so what we are bringing forth first, as um you know, Michael talked quite a bit about, uh you know, just a few moments ago, are the two, the two grants, the planning grant um which uh we ready ourselves to be eligible for the bigger grant in the fall of 2022, the incentive grant, which actually uh creates the ability to um you start a project, get shovels in the dirt. So um the planning grant, um everyone's pretty familiar with, had a menu of options um of different housing strategies, um qualifying strategies that we could pick from uh with needing a minimum of three that we can identify um to eventually be eligible for uh the incentive grant. And so through a, a process um in speaking directly with the board and the city and the housing coalition, uh all of us working um in conjunction with one another, we really looked at those menu of options um specific to our community and, and what the desires of uh the stakeholders were in, in looking at, at carving out opportunities specific to us. And let me screen share just real quick here. I know I sent you, I apologize. Um I sent right at the very beginning of the meeting here, I sent everyone the um my just a um just going to kind of highlight. Can you all see that? Okay?
I can't see anything.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Try again here. Okay.
Anne, are you trying to show the staff report?
Yeah.
Let me see if, want me to help you out?
Sure. Actually, it should be. Look, I can uh, I can share that. You know, I just wanted to go to the proposal part and then I hopefully I'll have a better luck getting to the budget.
Just what you're looking for?
To.
It's not, and yours isn't sharing either, Michael. It just says you've started screen sharing, but it's black.
Let me try again here. Oh, I can't do it either.
Yeah, my screen's now frozen.
Um let me try one more time.
Uh let me see, Michael can, well, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna.
Yeah, mine's screen's frozen.
I'll stop him sharing as host or I'll try. Here we go. All right, now I'm gonna try.
I can get it now. Okay. Um so at the top of the staff report, we just reiterated some of those uh different qualifying strategies. And um are you, can you see that? Okay?
No.
Are you, are you trying to pull up the staff report or the draft? Because I can, I don't have the draft, but I do have the staff report. Oh, how funny. It tells me I'm share screening. Okay.
Does anybody else?
Can, no, you can't see it?
No, I can't see either.
Huh, okay, I'll stop share. How weird. Okay. Um yeah, I was just trying to kind of hi- highlight um the proposal and the items of the, the menu of options um that we thought spoke to. Thanks, Sarah. Um so if you could just scroll to the second page. Those first bulleted items are just kind of a recap of the menu of option items. And then this is um really kind of pulls out and talks a little bit more. And I think that it's um LDG's presentation and specifically I wrote down their incentive toolbox. I think you'll see.
I think you'll see that a lot of these, that that presentation was a bit timely because we go start going through the things that we identified with the help of the board and the city and the housing coalition of of things that spoke to us and made sense out of those strategies. And so as you look through there, the first item being an update on the disposition of publicly owned property, something that we had already be, the board had already been in in discussion on. So this aligned nicely with that. The community guidelines for the new regional housing authority, which would include policies for land donation. As we are, the city actually is in communication right now and negotiations with Climax on the parcel that potentially may be a good housing site. This is, this will be a critical first step in in going through that land donation as well as looking at the tax incentive that the regional housing authority can bring to the equation. And then just as adoption of a formal policy to leverage publicly owned parcels. Next, you know, we've had lots of discussions about the fact that we have separate districts for park, the water and landfill sanitation, and having the technical support to help facilitate those conversations and look at ways and strategies to to work with infrastructure. And then also, you know, some of these items are things that we haven't really dove into too much, like fee waivers. However, what we are agreeing to through this is that we're committed to vetting these and the potential of them being relative and successful in our community. So also looking at expedited affordable housing applications, moving to the front of the line, potential fee waivers, code amendments, and then the ADU. The city has been very interested in working through its AD, its existing code on ADUs and and making it consistent with its dimensional standards, which has a little bit of a conflict right now in its code. So these are all the strategies and outcomes where we would be looking to gain capacity and expertise to help us look through the lens of of what works best for our community. And it also positions us to be eligible for the incentive grant because we'll have the ability to check the boxes and be able to ready ourselves for for that bigger opportunity. So the total budget, and I'm gonna, I'm hoping I can screen share that for the the project is I anticipated at 65,000 with a 25% match. Let me try again and see if I can get that this time. It's not gonna, not getting it right. It's just not even giving me the right screen. Oh, do you want to email it to me and then I can? Let me try again here. Let me see if it's gonna do it. It might have it. Nope. I'm going to email it to you, Sarah. Okay. Okay, real quick, because it's just, it's not opening the right window for some reason. I'll just screen share the staff report until I get to pull that up again. And the other thing that while we're waiting on that to come through, I would just also I'd logistically, we do, I will need the resolution signed. And hopefully Patty can help facilitate getting that recorded today so that I can go ahead and get that uploaded as as this mission this afternoon. That needs to be in before five. So also, if there's any way that I can help with the logistics on that, please let me know so that I can do that. Did that come through? Okay, for you, Sarah? Great. Is that showing? Oh, let's see. Yes, yes. So this goes through all of those items that we just spoke about before. And with Michael certainly helped with acquiring these projected costs. It demonstrates the 25% match and the the four different areas that we just recapped from the staff report. So if you have any questions on those, I would certainly also ask Michael to add some information to them as well as he did assist in vetting those numbers. So if there's any questions in any of the financial aspect of of the budget, love to hear those, or if you have any questions about any aspect of of the grant, we would love to take questions or or answer anything that we can.
The only, the only thing I would add, and sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
My computer completely crashed when I did that whole share screens on my phone now. The only kind of technical piece I think the county commissioners need to be aware of is as the grant is submitted submitted to date, since today is the deadline, the county is, per the applicant, is on the hitch for the full match of 16,250, that 65. However, there is anticipated that we will go formally in front of the city council to do a half and half on that. But even if that does come through, the the luxury of the county taking on that is twofold because it creates less of administrative burden for Ann when she actually does the reporting on the grant in that the the city would just cut the the county a check directly. Two, it allows the city to potentially budget that for 2022 and, you know, bring the match over because the grant will go through the fiscal year. And then three, again, the hope is that your your burden on the grant matches then reduced by half, if that makes sense. But as written, DOLA does require the commitment of funds in full by the count.
I I get that. I I don't have any problem with that. And and we kind of planted the seed beforehand. I know this has been talked about. I think Christie went to city council. I went last week as well to let them know that a match request would be would be forthcoming. And also just to add on to there, you know, every every item here really does span across city and county as we're talking about the different ways that that we need to kind of address that and leverage the tools that that we have collectively. So I don't have any problem with making that commitment, not knowing the city's dedication. But I will ask my fellow commissioners if there is, they have an issue.
No, I don't.
Yeah, no, I don't. And either, and I'll just know, I mean, I think the, we've been in really good cooperative discussions with the city and city council. You know, and there's more, there's more we'll be doing than just this. So I think we're, we've got a good partnership going, so.
Yeah, I totally agree.
Yep. Great. Um. All right. Um, no other questions on the budget? Anything else we need to look at before giving you the thumbs up and going through the resolution for you on that one last item to, for submission by the end of day? Ann or or Michael?
I don't have anything else.
I have nothing else either.
Okay.
And Commissioner March, this is, this is Mayor Lobby. I just want to thank the the county commissioners for being supportive of this.
Sure, you're welcome. I, this is, yeah, I think we're all, I think we're all eager to get the ball rolling and and have have some more traction. So it's very exciting to have both Michael on board with SCAD and 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 these opportunities looking, you know, in the near future with some funding. But, um, all right, well, then I will pull up the resolution. Well, I guess I'll I'll ask my commissioners. Maybe perhaps you should consider a motion to approve the submission of the application or or I guess that is the resolution. If you want me to read through the resolution.
Yeah, if you want to do that, that would be great.
All right, I pulled it up, and since everybody seems to be having an issue. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, and and Patty, which resolution number would this be? Do you know off the top of your head?
It would be 20.
20, all right. Thank you. Okay. Proceeding of Board of County Commissioners, County of Lake and State of Colorado, Resolution 2120, a resolution supporting the application for a planning grant to the Department of Local Affairs, or DOLA. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of County of Lake, State of Colorado, is vested with administering the affairs of Lake County, Colorado pursuant to state statutes. And whereas the board is deeply committed to finding strategies to address the community housing needs. And whereas the Department of Local Affairs is offering grant funding to local governments for assistance in adopting qualifying land use strategies for affordable housing development pursuant to the House Bill 21-1271 herein after planning grant. And whereas the board strongly supports the county's application for the planning grant, thereby increasing capacity and technical expertise to review and adopt policies to support the development of affordable community housing. Now therefore be it resolved, section one, the county hereby authorizes application for the planning grant and if awarded agrees to serve as the applicant and designated fiscal agent. Section two, if the grant is awarded, the board agrees to receive the grant award monies and authorizes the expenditure of such grant award monies as necessary to meet the term and obligations of the approved grant scope. Section three, this resolution shall become effective upon its adoption. Moved, read and adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lake, State of Colorado, at its regular meeting held the 20th day of September 2021.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 21-20.
I'll second.
Great. Any further discussion?
None for me. Thank you.
None for me.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor. I.
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 Great. Thank you so much for all the work on this. This is a very exciting.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very exciting.
All right. We pull up the. All right, and so we'll move on to item four, which is our tourism panel Miles Media Contract. And I will screen share again. Hold on a second. All right. Okay, so I received this last week from the tourism panel. And this is an annual, a typical subscription for them through the Colorado Tourism Office. I do believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that they've actually reduced their subscription or or ad placement down to one page, which is this contract you see before us. It used to be two, and I believe that the tourism panel has communicated recently a desire to really kind of put our dollars locally. And so I think that this is a great, a great step. But this is basically an annual, annual renewal of some of their typical marketing strategies. Are there any questions from the board?
No, I don't have anything right now.
No, none for me. Thanks for the background.
Yeah.
All right. Great. Happy to entertain a motion.
I will make a motion that we approve the contract with Miles Media LLC.
I'll second.
All right, great. Any further discussion?
No, thank you. None for me.
Okay.
None for me.
All right, all those in favor. I.
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 Great. Moving on. We have item five of resolution for the Park Replacement Fund. Commissioner Marcella?
Um, I actually don't have a copy of that with me, so can we move that to tomorrow as well? Sorry.
Sure. Do you want to give us a brief kind of synopsis? I think that Amber's, our rec directors, maybe brought this up to all of us, but I'm not quite sure. So just a really quick kind of what we'll be looking at.
Yeah, absolutely. So when the, when the community park field was built back in 2009, there was a recreation, a park replacement fund that was initially set up. And the intent of that fund was to put money in there every budget cycle to prepare for the replacement of the turf on the field because it's very costly, we know, to replace the turf. And so what had happened is that fund evolved to include an incorporation of saving money for additional recreational facility repairs that previously had included the aquatic center, the the community park field and other recreational amenities like Huck Finn that may need to have upgrades from time to time or the tennis courts that need to be resurfaced type of thing. And Placer has asked us to take on their fund, the the remaining funding in their organization and the dog park funding that they also hold. So we'll place all of that money into the Recreation Fund and internally track those quote unquote fund balances for the Dog Park Fund turf replacement and and allocate that money appropriately within that fund so that it's saved and spent appropriately.
That's helpful. Thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll get that on the agenda for tomorrow as well as the NODL and then the landmark survey work. And what's the fourth? And I'm spacing that at the moment, but.
It's Landmark UP Authorization Resolution for Authorization of Purchase, right?
Yep.
Landmark.
Sorry, landmark phase one. Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. All right, then, moving on, we're going to six, our transit feasibility study contracts.
Yeah. Do you want me to share my screen?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Okay, let me. Okay, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay. So we had, we had gone out to RFP at the beginning of the summer for our Lake County Transit Feasibility Study. And this transit feasibility study is funded through a grant at CDOT, the Department of Transportation, and then a collaborative match between the city and the county at $5,000 each. And we awarded the RFP to Fair and Peers for the local transit feasibility study. So this is the contract for that study, and it's been vetted by legal. And and we don't have any additional questions on the contract or the deliverables. So it's pretty straightforward. We'll begin work as soon as, as this contract is accepted and approved.
I don't have any other questions for you. Or actually, other than remind me the terms, how how long the work is going to be going on? When we might go back?
Yeah, so our grant with CDOT, excuse me, is scheduled to close June 30, 2022, so we have until until the end of June to complete the feasibility work. So we'll do some initial data collection and reconvene our local coordinating council, local that has local stakeholders and regional stakeholders on it that addresses local and regional transit needs and then start data collection and then data scrubbing. And then from there, they will make a recommendation to us on what are. and then from there, they will make a recommendation to us on what our local transit operations would look like from there, if there is a local need for transit, which I believe there will be.
Right, and they'll do cost analysis as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then our, and then after that, the next, the next step would be to develop a plan for implementing any kind of local transit that we would want to, want to do, and then apply for separate 5311 funding through the Department of Transportation for a local transit authority outside of the grant dollars that we already have with some stage.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, happy to entertain a motion for the approval of the contract with, remind us the recipient?
Fair and Peers.
Fair and Peers.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the contract with Fair and Peers for the local transit feasibility study.
I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion?
None from me, thank you.
Okay.
None from me.
Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, great, and last on our list, we have the joint discussion with the city on ARP requests, considerations, and allocations. I wonder, I think we had some priorities that the Board have collected. I wonder, I see the mayor's here, if we want to kind of share that list as it's being generated and hear from the mayor on city priorities, and then other anticipated asks or consideration for allocation. So it's only a good few, few things to put on the table first?
I think so.
Alright. Well, I think on our, our list, we had, and I know there's a couple missing here, but pulling up some of my notes, we had wildfire planning, fire department, capital, childcare, housing, and fleet. Anything else or anything to not really include in a joint conversation? We've already allocated some for childcare with Bright Start and also the broadband request with SCED and the Economic Development Corporation. Correct.
So, Sarah, can, can you give your list again, or I could share the screen, that spreadsheet that has SCED and the broadband?
Why don't you do that, that'd be great. I do not have that queued.
Because I think... Is that sharing? Yeah.
Yep.
You listed a couple of things that I don't think were on here, like the fleet stuff.
Well, and I don't, I think those were just general priorities, so if those are RP priorities, then let's not, let's not include that.
Well, yeah, there, I think there are things we were interested in doing, I don't think we yet, I just hadn't made onto this ARP spreadsheet yet. And I'll say, yeah, so I think, as you said, the broadband here on line 22 and the daycare on 16, we've committed. And then these up here for housing were just, you know, kind of initial contemplation, just trying to map out where we're at.
Mayor, what, what, so priorities, kind of high level topics?
Well, let's back up a little bit. I would, I would suggest that, that the city share in the, the Bright Start childcare costs. I know you've committed to it, but it, you know, you know, I feel like some of these things are important, both the city and county, and that we should share in that cost. So let's keep that in mind in terms of, of how you view your overall budget of ARPA funds, and, and it may make both of our funds work better if, when it's appropriate, we share in that funding.
Mayor, what, what kind of sharing would you propose with that Bright Start funding?
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with, with the, with the proposal that we, if we have a project that we both value, and we're using ARPA funds, that we do it as proportional, proportional share of what we've received overall, and the calculation I had was 30, 32.3% would be the city's share, and so that would be 60, 67.7% of the county. That, that, that would be my suggestion.
Okay.
Now, the city has only received a couple of proposals. We did receive that proposal from, from Bright Start, and you guys acted on it very quickly, so thank you. But we would love to, to help with that. We have also received something from, from C4, where, and I didn't even realize that during COVID, they were really very instrumental in working on not just energy issues, but utility issues, where they've, they've spent over $44,000 during COVID to help make that happen. Now, they would have to, I mean, that's, that's just an email I have for them, talking about, you know, what they've done and what they've spent. I think we would have to ask them for a proposal in terms of, of the ARPA funds, because what we know is you can't pay for things that have already been spent. If my understanding is correct, so they would have to make a proposal going into the future in terms of their need. The other I've received is from the center, and it's a very modest proposal, and they're just looking for some retention bonuses for their employees, and as we know, keeping, you know, employees right now is a really tricky proposition, especially in childcare.
Yeah, I'm wondering too, I know that the Childcare Coalition has also approached us or sent us a letter, and I don't know if they've sent the city one as well.
Yes, but it was, it wasn't an actual proposal, it was more general in scope, if I remember correctly, about, you know, what, what, what they're thinking about and some numbers. Is that, are we thinking about the same one? Maybe I haven't seen it.
Um, I think so.
As an example, in their letter, they had, they were showing $150,000 for Bright Start, but then Bright Start actually gave us a proposal for $204,000, so they weren't really...
Yeah, but I would, I kind of had a question on why, since we've really given that or dedicated that to the childcare providers, I would, I wonder what the request is from the Coalition?
I think we can ask Han, I can ask Hannah to come to us with a more detailed proposal, if you'd like, or send us a more detailed proposal.
Yeah, one of them was for Get Outdoors Leadville, you know, one was, I believe, for, you know, after-school programming, Project Dream, you know, they, they were just, they were really presenting ideas, but I would agree with Commissioner Marcela, each of those organizations needs to come to us with a proposal.
Yeah, are we asking them for a proposal, or are we saying if you, if you need to ask us for money? I guess my question about the Coalition is if they need to ask us money, or they were pushing to make a request on behalf of Bright Start, and with GoZ, recent funding, I just, I don't, I mean...
I don't know.
If they, if they want to ask for money, it needs, yes, I agree, generally. It needs to be a detailed, specific request.
They, they should, they should be coming to us and proposing what they need money for. Does it fit into the ARP guidelines for funding? And then, you know, what can we, what are we willing to do? And then the secondary issue, as I brought up last time, is, you know, are there proposals that, that resonate well with the city and county? In which case, can we share those costs?
Um, I mean, honestly, I don't know that we've, I'm kind of thinking housing really covers a lot of those, some of those parts and pieces, and satellite, like, programs and projects that are going on. Other than... I mean, I, you know, we're looking for other kind of funding for, like, wildfire mitigation. I don't know if we, I had not anticipated putting that on the list for ARP funds. And, you know, we, as a Board, we haven't necessarily decided if we think we might want to retain some portion of the funding so that we don't spend everything over the next year.
It's not my impression, at least what I've seen so far, because the requests are not so great that we would deplete all the funding, you know, I don't even know, based on what I've seen, if we'd even touch a fourth of it right this second, but that's just what I've seen. You have some bigger ticket items on here, and you said something about fire department capital, and I wasn't, not sure what you're talking about there.
Well, again, I think I might have been mixing up a couple different priority lists as far as, like, bigger capital acquisition or big ticket dollars. But I think as far as that goes, generally speaking, our, our thought process, or one layer of our thought process on projects and programs is just, you know, putting away some of those dollars for that capital acquisition fund and planning on a five or 10-year replacement fund so that we don't get into kind of a a dire situation of really not having had the funds building up, but we've, I mean, we've all talked about that together, I think.
I think it's a great idea. We have a pretty good solid replacement matrix to look at, and of course, it's always scary to look at those things, especially with something as big as the fire department budget and the Fire Management Board, you know, we could be looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in, in replacement costs. Jeff, what do you think?
Yeah, no, and I think that, that's the kind of thing that, at least, Sarah, what you were saying, second, is this the idea of trying to, not that we would spend that each year, but just that we would keep trying to build up that fund so that we don't, you know, get hit with a large, you know, multi-hundred thousand dollar, you know, whether it's a fire engine or another fleet piece of equipment, or, you know, repairs to buildings, just, you know, being able to keep up with fund balances in the right places so that we're, we're building up those year-on-year costs, and Greg, you're exactly right, I mean, with the Fire Management Board, that was, you know, really appreciate the work that Chief Daly's done, sort of keeping that spreadsheet up to date of where we are with every piece of equipment, and sort of keeping on track of what it'll cost, and, yeah, so, and I think back to ARP, I'm not, you know, some of those things probably aren't ARP eligible, but just, you know, thinking about big-ticket items.
You know, I'm gonna digress a little bit, in terms of wildfire planning, were you aware that the Joint Budget Committee is going to be here, I think on October 6, to speak with our fire department?
No. I did, I just got an email from Dan this morning, and I, I shared a calendar invite, but it was not, it was without any context or explanation, and I, and I don't know that I have a ton more to share than that.
I don't think I do either, except the only reason I can imagine, and I, you know, I could be, I could be letting my imagination run wild, is they have to be here wanting to learn about wildfire mitigation. You know, so...
And, yeah, and CMTC is, I think, development of the academy, and how that integrates in, you know, kind of benefits for us as a rural, small community. Yeah, that's, I, I share in that guess, Mayor, but I don't know... I mean, is, is that, like, is infrastructure protection an eligible expense? I haven't even gone as far as to vet that.
I have not seen that in COVID. Infrastructure for affordable housing is, is an eligible expense. In terms of infrastructure for wildfire, I don't never see anything there about that. But...
I don't either. I don't remember seeing anything explicit about that, Commissioner Mudge, in any of the guidance that I've seen.
Yeah.
But I do think we should lead on the Joint Budget Committee, because if it's not, not clear to everybody by now that we have a huge wildfire issue in Colorado after last season, you know, I guess we can count our blessings, we're not Northern California, okay? But we could be in the future if, if we don't do what, what we need to do now.
Yeah.
So I have a, it's not exactly a proposal, it's more like a thought, as usual. I don't think we, we have, we, I don't think we have enough people who've come to us with proposals to sit down and vet them and look at them and say, okay, what's prioritized? Or, or here's where we want to spend money, and here's where we don't want to spend money. And I just can't tell how, for instance, the center, their, their request of $18,500, that may feel more imminent, and maybe that's one that we'll let the city deal with, and then talk about sharing those costs after the fact, similar to what you did with Bright Start, if you think that's, that's an okay approach. I don't want to put off people who, who need the money in the short term to accomplish what we all want them to accomplish, but I also don't want to just start throwing money at these organizations without a plan. So I guess, I guess my suggestion is, let's, let's tell people, if you, if you want to participate, please get us a proposal, and then once we have some proposals, maybe the forums could sit down and go through them and make some decisions, just a, just a work session. I don't think it's going to take a long time.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I think that sounds like a reasonable approach, and again, I think kind of inherently we've agreed on that similar approach with all things affordable housing. We've kind of, that's, that's, we've developed our conversations into that kind of system. So I, I feel comfortable with that.
Okay, with your permission, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Hannah and tell her, you know, for their coalition, you know, they, they have a number of people in their coalition who are, who are, have thrown out some ideas, but let her know, then we need to see proposals.
And I, and I think too, like, on, you know, like, thinking about Coalition work and developing either that case or, or programming, if there's, if there's new programming, yeah, that, I think we need to understand about that, and if there's past efforts that just haven't really been, haven't gained a lot of traction, you know, maybe that's a place where we do some more development of that project or idea, and then kind of save ARP funding for the implementation of those things. Just, just, and maybe that's through the coalitions, or maybe, maybe not, and, and I'm not necessarily inviting, like, 1,000 new, totally new projects, because we got a lot on the plate with housing stuff, but, um, yeah, I think it, I don't know, it should be thoughtful and integrated into some of the bigger, like, strategies and priorities.
Yeah, I could get that, because I was really... Yeah, I, I could get that, because I was really quite shocked, I was shocked that C four had been doing thi- this program. And really, I had never even heard of it. I didn't know they were doing it, it was, it was, it was really a surprise to me. Uh, and I don't know, it, there may be other organizations that have been really involved in COVID issues that, that we, I, I can't imagine. That there are, but, but I was surprised by C four.
Commissioners, any? Any thoughts or? Other things you want to hit on?
Um, I don't, I don't really think so, and I, I think uh. I think to kind of add to Mayor Lobby's point, um. You know, I think it's, it's important for us to encourage people that may have been helpful through the pandemic to come to us with a proposal of like, hey, we've. Um, expended all of our resources through the pandemic to assist our community, and here's what, what it would mean to us to have some of this funding, but then also for us to. Look at what. We might feel maybe necessary to assist with economic. Recovery and. And improvement in our community, and really try to place those dollars where they might have the biggest overall lasting impact. You know, um, and so I'm thinking about particularly um, partnerships with, with things like Parkville Water and Leadville Sand. Um, to, to get some of the ball rolling on some of that infr- infrastructure investment. To. To get things like housing ready to go, um, or, or, you know. Looking for setting up some emergency housing, like maybe buying. Uh, a home or a duplex that we could use in, in emergent situations, um. I, I think just some of those things are, are things that we might want to make a decision. Um, together with potentially city council, so that our priorities somewhat match.
Mm-hmm. But yeah, I don't think we have anything quite. Organized in that. In some of those new thoughts, but as they come, let's kind of keep in mind to. Schedule those work sessions, Mayor, would it be helpful if we, I mean, I think it's always helpful if we try to make an evening meeting with you and Council. Um.
Uh, yeah, that, but, but I, as you said, we need more information right now.
Yeah.
I don't feel like we're in a position to, to really make much in the way of decisions. At this point, you, you may be in terms of some other of your, of your priorities. Uh, in terms of these kind of non-profits who have been COVID-related, and, and certainly childcare is one of those. Um, I, I just, I just would, I'd love to see some proposals and something to, to really wrap my mind around what they're asking for.
Okay. I don't, I don't know that I have anything else. Any other burning questions, go ahead, Commissioner.
I mean, ju- ju- just the one other thing, again, we're, we're not quite ready for it, but just to sort of put on the run, and. Especially with the, with the mayor and city is, you know, if we are going to move ahead with some of the temporary. Holding cells to backfill the lack of a jail.
Hmm.
Um, until a justice center, I think we were exploring whether. That was a potential use of um, of ARP. Funds.
That's a great, great one to bring up.
I, I think also to just be um. Remembering that the residential assessment rate will be lowered through legislative action in twenty twenty-two as well, so there may be. Um, an opportunity for us where we may need to use that as supplemental um. Revenue for revenue loss in twenty twenty-two, um, but. I, I'm not sure how, how much that will affect us. At this point, I think it's a little early to tell, but uh, potentially with, with some calcul- calculations, we might be able to figure that out. Pretty easily.
Okay. Well. I think uh, I guess our next, well. We can, we can keep each other apprised, I, I don't have any other new uh. Uh, requests, and Mayor, if you want to reach out to those groups and share. Our thoughts, that'd be great, and then I suppose we can join um. Next city council meeting on the House Bill question and. And talk a little bit more about, are we at a place to talk a little bit more about the Housing Director position? Is that also something that we would share?
I think.
ARP funding?
I have to tell you that, I mean, you know, I, 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 uh, I've, I've sent out some parameters to the city attorney to get us an ICA. Uh, in the meantime, I'm kind of holding my breath, because I felt like the. Uh, the proposal that's going to be on the ballot in November was one of our funding mechanisms for that position. Um, and, and, you know, that's an assumption on my part. Uh, but that seems, it seems like a, a good way to get that position in place, i- is to have that revenue.
Okay. Chris, did you a question?
I was just going to mention, I feel like that I recall from that meeting. The last joint work session that we had with the OCC City Council, where you guys decided. To pursue that position that you. I had heard the room say in consensus that they would not want to wait to see how the ballot measure shook out. Uh, or pursuing that.
Well, I think we're talking about, I think we're dedicated to funding that, we're just talking about exactly. Where that gets allocated from, so I, I don't think that's the mayor's.
Okay, sorry, I had interpreted it wrong.
I, I think I was suggesting that, but I, I might have been, I might have been wrong. Uh, you know, so, but I, I do agree that we should commit to it either way. It's similar to what we're doing right now with, with the city administrator. We're committed to it either way, we're hoping Dola comes through for us as they did for you. Uh, but, but, you know. We're not necessarily, we're not hinging that position on, on Dola's uh, granting. Of our, our request.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you guys for, for the conversation, I will uh, I'll shoot off a note to Hannah. Um, this afternoon. And just let her know, we, we'd like, uh, you know, some proposals from interested parties. Uh, no, no promises, uh, but we need some information.
Okay. Very good, thanks, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you guys very much.
Um. Commissioners, anything else on that before we just move into our one last housekeeping item of bills and payroll?
No, that was good.
Okay, great.
Bye.
Thanks. Okay, uh, and that's it for our new business, and last on the list, as I said, we have housekeeping item. Um, for approval of our bills and payroll for pay period ending September tenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry, did you say that you're, you're.
I did not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of bills and payroll for pay period ending September tenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Uh, second.
All right, any further discussion?
No, thank you.
Not for me.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, um, great, well, I'll circle back with uh, Michael on. Uh, that scope of work and come in to sign those docs to get those recorded for their, for them pushing those out. And uh. I think that wraps up the meeting.
Wonderful.
All right, all right, at three oh three, we will adjourn, thank you all.
Thank you so much.